Hello, everyone. This is the favorite meeting of the year. And I'm glad we're having it in January. Yes, this is better. So we have a list of topics and you all have the agenda. Should we do a little call since we are being filmed? Yeah, let's do it. I'll start it and he'll go right around. So Mayor Joe Pritchett. Sorry, this is not going to be good.
Mayor Joe Pritchett, Senator Alvin Aaron.
State Councilman Sean McQuaid.
And our previous city council.
Shikida Yama City Council.
Dave Forman, Assistant City Manager, Polk's Department.
Public Commissioner Shosworth, Earl Moss.
Kevin Dogg, District Attorney, Conrash.
Jeff Satter, Police Chief.
Jamie Rock, Deputy City Attorney.
Tommy Martin, City Attorney, Your Office.
Senator, City Attorney, Your Office.
Harold Bogus, City Attorney.
Senator Sonia Populous Lewis, Senate District Seventeen, which is wonderful law law to the already in law yet.
And Karen Kornick, state representative. We go around getting fed by Fox and Fox. We have a mood. So yeah, my history is smart.
So we have Diane Chris, Baycom, Little Letters, she's a councilwoman. And Marsha Martin is also counsel. She is out of state at the moment, so she obviously won't be here. So the first thing on our agenda here, Zach, it's on the is top concerns for public safety. So Jeff, until Zach comes back. What do you want us to say? What do you think? Say it, Mike, is that?
And I would more than that.
You have a lot to say.
I think we want to talk about these other things.
Yeah. So Zach, we are at top concern for public safety. Do you want to get that?
Sure, that's fair. Thank you very much. So I had sent out a basically just a kind of top three things, legislatively that we were looking forward to 2024, we're going to work on in 2025, moving forward. Some of the things that directly affect it. There's a lot of things that came through the legislature this year that passed affecting public safety and mental health. But one of the big challenges that we're starting to see and what we've started to see over the last few years is there really is this gap. So what a challenge to move from a whole by Colorado Department of Services. It is more, as you said, the medical reasons, mental health reasons. They're not in a condition where they're taken up in place with foster homes or faculty parents. And so that challenge typically what we're firing was being dropped off in the hospital. And then the hospital is caretaker for his child. So Human Services has nowhere to put the child because of the lack of edge or facilities bases. A lot of times what we do is the hospital calls us. And we can't take possession of the child because they're going to go back to you. So this really creates a lot of frustration in hospitals. While fortunately, and I'm sure that is Human Services for Colorado, I can't speak for them, but it seems that we're not talking about the mayor's issues. We're talking many times within months. If you're in this facility, you're not still not doing the proper care thing. You're trying to figure out, you know, I'm behind the farm, I have to work. What do those pieces look like? So really, I think that what I've hoped for from our legislature to do in 2025 is if we can, given that we've had a chance to try to use it for longer, probably issue that will give you cheap shoppers, investments. I don't know how some of them did, if you try to push forward, particularly in the review. And so this is definitely a gap that we're starting to see. As we, again, as we don't know how it's going to be something this year. So if we can get on it early on, it helps them continue and get that treatment thing we need before we get to do the other things. Again, so the goal is, I don't know if it's funny, or if it's in the beds. I'm not really sure the issue, just known for us, so we see where it worked and what it was, is that there's a lack of space. It is a little bit of treatment that we need. We're not getting this at the hospital, we're going to want that from there. Some type of mental staff isolated and we fear to be counseled. One of the things that we'll tell you that Don hasn't done for us, you know, we do the last one, that was, you know, we had a pilot program for schools, the coordinate is score. They call it score now, but they introduced it down in the hall. It's over our coordination. And so we decided to put permission to decide schools to work with the school system. And Charlie can address mental health issues that are working there. We did forty-five days, we didn't go to school. Was in those forty-five days, about two months, we didn't give a date because we're just talking about student. We had one hundred and twenty-five touchpoints, meaning that we not necessarily have a different kid, but we were in contact, different places, different locations. Twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-five times. So, no, so this is across just the school. So if you know what you're saying, the regular thing, especially in law, but this is just law law at school. We worked in eighteen different schools that we responded to with this team. Basically, as our mission. And they tried to do what they called a level of two public contacts. Meaning they're trying to get resources outside of the school for the school leaders who are going to be in town. It's something that we can talk to Don about. And I was hoping to, I think it's a budget issue for there. Also funds position. So we actually got the idea from cops about. They actually went over there, but not a lot of this thing right now. But we did go however it is, and we did see a need for that. So we'll continue to do that. Again, one is if we can't keep them in the school, we can't get them the resources at the home or the community, they're helping. That really seems to be a challenge both for community and trying to do it. Do you want to talk about how many times we're in elementary schools? Yeah, I don't have a number. Let me see what you have. This was not just our middle schools and our high schools. We were also in elementary schools, which, yeah. So I can start even earlier, I guess, is the point. Yeah, so we can catch. We could get all four, we could middle, high schools, elementary schools. I got right within the same area of school sector in the city. I don't have a company that's specifically at this school or we did have contact with, I think it's eighteen different schools. We didn't have an SRO. Prison community, or elder school, they don't have SROs. A bunch of called not the part. In that sense, it was a sack, which is not just the other part of the separate. Other issue that I can listen there.
Can I ask you about that? Is it, are we allowed to ask questions?
You have to stop them first.
Is there a balance school district also like this? Is there a congoing or is it just a?
No, there is a congoing.
Do they submit to law law schools? Were they able to extrapolate the success on those kids perhaps being able to stay home, stay cold, stay home and might not end up being out of their house in the hospital? Are you worried?
So I don't have any answer there. I happened to sit with Tyler, who's kind of chief counsel for them. And the director, if you hear you went through the topic of programs, I think around, and I just took the idea to keep that to staff. And so I, this is a, this is a, we can keep the child in school. I mean, we all have to go with them on the street. And we can get them to treat them for a little bit. Whether or not, then that helps her when she's trying to start that early on. It's a, don't have any data, and I don't know if I'm going to share that with you, Chris. But I don't have any of that data that's kind of been affected. I can try to talk to psychologists that we have in purpose even further and see if she can get any data.
Well, it's great. Have you heard of the chain of the office starts? Certainly, our treatment beds, that if we can get to those case before they move to chat, which is what?
Correct, and that is, that's the goal, is try to keep them in their home and in school. But we do know that a little bit of our time, since there's children passing through, it's certainly a possibility. It's a parent's, you know, they have. So I think that's the key to why I have an issue there. Kind of a program, internal concerns that we defer it, but then also I share. The case may do, I have a bad, I have a bad, I have a bad. That's the whole idea why I'm, we want to, to, yeah. Is to keep them out of the justice system, to help the need. So what Jeff is referring to is, so we, I don't know if there's another program, like the front program similar to this. So if you know, it was an effort, we went to the root school, we adopted from the school before I, probably four or five years ago. And Dr. Dan, I spoke in one of those teams. And so what we do, we actually track all of our students, students. No positive, and classified, small working group. We track anything from gender based, school they go to, how they complain, the mission came in, anything you could think of, our SRO extract, that will contact us. But we worked with senior checkup, per staff, and also with the judge of senior staff. So our program, where it fails is that we start in the school system. They would interest in closing six, we're all in state, we're just a kid. Basically, that is six. So you recognize to people who say you're changing about to murder six is four. So the rebound program that we have currently because of law law is to preface, meaning that you can come to, let's say you do something, death, fight, and you can make a recovery case in it, or the decision going to the state level, whoever's to cover. So what they're doing is doing these papers that ask to, living in a parent's room, or ask to come to a meet, basically giving a notification with the program. They can opt in or opt out of the program. There is work to do, so people don't want to do that work. But they're beginning with the cesss, to determine after the issue of the psychological cesss also. And then they craft a program around what the child, they would be serving. Gets the data, I'll see to it. So for the justice person, we do a lot of that. So it's not something they can make the own decision on what happens. But they ran a plenty of cases, what happens back to them. We had that program probably for at least a year to have. They're going to expand that downside of our students, presented that on the floor, having to refer to these cases. Which is correct, if you made a decision, decision provided to individuals getting a right, you should receive a human assistance system. This is, this is a success. I have done a job on it. So Jeff, if you can, maybe I have to add, um, daughter. So I haven't got that stuff. So again, getting the opportunity, it's work, but it's not a good way to be shaped. But I think you had a question.
Yeah, before I get there, thank you for letting us have an interactive. Yes, I very appreciate that. Just curious, have you learned about how many kids are this, they're eighteen or whatever, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you know how that works? If you don't have it, just curious.
I know, that's a tough one. We can, we certainly, I may not know here.
Just curious, but I'd make a question for you on this idea about what can we do about these kids that are being kept in these facilities? Have you talked to the mental health Colorado at all about a niche program? I know they're trying to be more responsive for their communities. We've certainly given them millions and millions of dollars on the help and targeted at youth, you know, mental health issues.
So I think, sort of, it is actually just being like.
I do too.
Yeah, so I think that's the challenge is that when we look to, I guess, the government, they see this ghost of me, they're like, what do you guys have? And I'm like, I ain't having nothing. And we have to know, based, this, this child came to your parents.
That's why I was asking about, about help Colorado, because they sort of many areas, they do vendor contracts out for people on the state, you know, vendor and holding. So I, because I've been happy to make that on the, on the, see if they are already looking at this.
That would be, that would be fantastic. I'd like this up to wider, it's kind of similar, it's kind of moving. As far as saying this is what we're experiencing. And then if you talk a little bit about how the safety measure is better.
Yes.
Challenges of that, and to your point, there are a lot of money to follow in, 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 in. And so we can't just try and figure out what part of the machine is the right option. It's just no place or location. And so they're having.
And then the other piece is, we may have, I don't know, call it a, again, but Senator Markham is on the faculty of Thompson Valley Schools. If you're interested in getting some data about that, to try to get that.
Sounds like a good area to offer. We, I'm sure the public that just got public access, they're willing to shoot at school now, but you should be able to kind of get some, you know, like, whether I make it good.
Thank you. This is exactly good. This is exactly what we're looking for, these kind of issues to kind of look at on the state.
So I'm going to, I don't have a lot of time. So I'll try to move through some of this. So one of the things I had missed in, and I didn't before I came in, it was in two seconds, and that was a case of, there's a lot of good things that are in that bill. But one of the challenges that I think is, you're seeing, is not related to holding these accountable. What you do is, city may be able to do the numbers up, but I don't deal with the losses. And so we here, in law law, I've had, I have to say, a thing where everything was followed, and we give a large check to the individual, particularly certain, the officer, going to the trial. And we'll use those sort of pieces based on the, the, the. And then the power is given to the plaintiff, and basically kicks it into this review process, and really the suspension of post certification. What, what the state, I think, is trouble, when you talk about criminal court case, there's a higher standard of proof that you have to base on. For the civil trial, it's basically going to go back to, to, to. The prime example there is probably the winner, the defendant's case. Well, in case they can make a clear, if it was to the defendant, it's in the terms of this corporate act, it's like, what? And so I think what we've done is we've passed this to the civil trial, versus really legitimate facts of case. So what my reclamation and advocacy, not an extra of this, is if we can separate the civil page from post certification, that kicks away the possibility of cross certification, it always will. And I don't think you can issue challenges of reproach, as you would do in these cases, where serious crime, danger occurs, and making it a charge of issue, how we close and have that done. But do it on the merits of the case, and look at it from a higher standard for, 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 for,[1381.25]
Mayor, what? All right. So, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, why don't we just at the next council meeting bring it up as a motion and because we heard it, we know what it's about and it should be a big discussion.
Yeah. Some of the last things with Jeffrey, Jeffrey Reister are the I S E P R. So, if we have an issue like this, we don't just ask the Attorney General. We have channels that we work through and that Jeffrey is our channel. Okay. Great. Do you have the?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I'll go very quickly. Sorry, can I take it to the side?
No, no.
Let's see, point four of seven is the weapons possession duty is a good point. And one of the things that was talked about, the legislators about such is it greatly really mainly factors that's in several distribution of funds. And so, we want you to do that to us. I don't know. You already know this, but I say it, but it does involve subject. We brought up two years ago, we had two groups of individuals shooting each other and they actually had a homicide. So, again, if you see these things happen. And so, for Tony and I lost, if you're in a meeting this year, it would be something that we need to ask. Let's say we look at these. Again, we're not talking about shooting a civilian or what we're talking about is a new that are charged maybe back inside. There was a little history that there was changes on the law and we're looking at it. We ask, we're trying to have. It's one of the challenges we're trying to help with it. It's great that we have some of these things going. It's challenging some of these. I don't know. I mean, if you go by a hundred percent of the right after I say, so again, try and hold those folks accountable that's really what's changing technical issues that we're dealing with by some of those. It really works well for you to look for and ask. And just to piggyback off of that, just one of the things that I have had to say, one of the challenges of this, and I've seen it also through you, is the juvenile offense. And that would be used from the past, here this year. Not suggesting that these go back to that, because they're a bunch of children from the childhood. But we do have an issue here. And I would tell you that we've got a video that of one of the homicides, a youth, an artillery that were standing by our point of the city, I think, you and the council have seen that. It was one of your children, it was no, it wasn't on the scene. He actually reached out to their parents through the Children's Services and said, hey, we'd like to meet you. Not police, but we want to meet with you as a single officer, see how you can help. He had his partner, he was zero. Brought them back to see what issues they were. It really didn't seem to have any heartaches of the child running out and having to be hit by a fire. And so, this is we're starting to see kids who went and tried to kill. And this seems to be an issue that I know is a challenge for a lot, a challenge across our part. There really needs to be some higher level of people in the firearms. Again, plenty of old folks who know that they're probably fired up. We start with a few there, so we can do that. And that's what we're starting to see. The border showing up to the vehicle, probably like the fight is now I kind of am in the issue. And I know that intent is shoot you, but I'm going to shoot your car up your chair, I'm going to shoot at your house. And we're starting to see that kind of significant issue across the country plus. Mayor, I will just close on these three things real quick. Thank you for the courtesy for allowing me to do the bill for murder suspects. It's not too bad, we're going to the lawyers and the member. The judges have said, Judge McCarthy, judge, because you're here to set high standards of laws on those individuals who would stay in jail. But based on the Supreme Court ruling, I mean, last year, then last year, I appreciate you taking that after the members make that. Also appreciate the loyalty you did collectively to see this bill versus containing jails of emergency payments. So, I wish that bill was having an influence record to treatment vessels, which may or may not be available. But it really affected some of the businesses in Southern Colorado, Eastern Colorado, where those hospitals were even a hour away. It still may not be stopping facilities for that. Being able to hold them with the reasonable amount of out of jail, get things calm down sufficiently to get them transferred to the appropriate. So, thank you for that. And then last thing I would like to say very much, the dispatch could be rectified and first responded. That is huge for them. And Representative Coleman, thank you very much. And we'll make them to set aside for those million, I think, twenty-four, twenty-sixty, a lot of those. This conflict bill really was to protect those homeowners. There were some challenges with that bill, but I appreciate the work we were able to do. Is putting this a holding back to pay the issue, which I know this conversation is going to add it. And really, that bill really needs to be checked and reviewed that. So, thank you very much for listening and working with us that address.
Important, so thanks, Harold.
Certainly, yes.
Really important. I'll just just a quick piggyback on the distribution of drugs and how those go with guns. The latest Supreme Court case, Rahimi, actually now has called into question because the Supreme Court ruled that if you have a conviction for domestic violence, you do not have a gun. In the states that pass that, the problem is it's also raised the issue about drug dealers and having guns. And the Supreme Court has already said they are going to bring it up in for 2025. So, the reason why I'm telling you that is because I've been on the red light protection bill every year. And we were looking at this exact one. But what happens is when we get to the Capitol, people are like, why should you do that now when the Supreme Court is going to now be ruling this next term? So, just know that that may put a little bit of a damper on the decision, waiting to see what it's. So, for quality and the discussion that we've gone on in this one, well, you can kind of see which direction like happens, happens all.
In New York, right there, a lot changed, you know, the big door a lot of. But I think the idea is to keep this up and look for it.
Right.
Because we do see it.
I agree.
We do see going back to the.
Exactly.
Yep. And we, of course, are due to our shooting, our homicides. And it's just something that gives you, that's at least on table for a conversation issue. And you're lifted by that, the Supreme Court.
Great conversation and interaction as far as what's happening. So, thank you very much. Next thing on our agenda is a discussion of the grants that the Sees recently stayed. Like every jurisdiction, we work in one housing transportation, education, and line use. But we don't have the dollars. We need help from the state. So, you have, I think, a few of this of the grants. And I don't know how we want to do this. Eric, I thought I would just point out a couple of it. And what we're interested in was asking is about particularly council priorities around housing, transportation, and development, early care and education. If you look, probably half of these grants are public safety grants. Yes. Most definitely. But there are also ones around water efficiency and especially there are ones for early education as well as transportation. And so, we really appreciate all of the different grant supports. And wanted to say people just have an advantage from those grant programs and laws. Harold, do you want to speak to any of these, even specifically areas that you're working like LHA or housing general, transportation for our market presence?
Yeah, so I think, well, there's a few, there's a few pieces. So, not last year, but the year before, we're just using the first, this coming out of the property. And we, when we said it was a 1.7 million dollars that we use to purchase a property adjacent to hospital, we're already purchasing the portable housing property. And so, we're exploring now where we're going through the pipeline process. And we're going to build 185 four cell homes, of which 55 of those will be permanently de-distributed at affordable Capitol Day. So, that's going to be below 80% A L I. And then the remaining will be attainable homes. And those will have a rolling de-destruction that also looks about the same time. And those will all be under 120% A L I qualified. We are actively looking for traditional states supporting that project. Because in order to get it done, we're getting a few waivers, obviously we want the land. When we look at the pro forma, there is still a gap in that project. And so, keep it moving. We were talking to the council where we're going to have to put in an additional six million of our portable housing funds to order attainable housing funds over the next three years to get that project done. We're still applying for grants on this because if we can get grants and not utilize the funds in our portable attainable housing fund, we can kind of project. So, we're trying to balance that. What's not in this is Department of Housing, we've really worked with this over the last few years. So, Longmont was unique in that we've had three consecutive years in a row where we've had selection of D O H and like that. So, we just have to bear that in mind, Chris, too. We are finishing up a stadium, which is 55 permanent, 40,000 units. And we're starting to move this up process now. And then, at the end of this month, we're hopefully closing on set, which is 88-ish, I forget the number exactly, family, affordable family housing. So, that's going to be one, two, three, four bedrooms with permanent shop near center. It's part of the process. So, we have, so the state's really helped us there. It's not on this list because it's going to come and switch. But I think as we just generally look at housing and where we're moving, you know, we're really looking at utilizing properties on 2023 months. And we're moving around this other projects, trying to figure out how it works. We have one project, which is the Middle Indian Housing Authority, which is an interesting program, to say the least. It, you know, it applies to tax exemption from the state, but it sort of moves around and how you handle affordable housing and in special limited partnerships where local jurisdictions can negotiate fee in order to get the tax exemption to offset the impact of property tax. And so, it sort of bypasses that. The project we were working on, the rate we're negotiating, but it's created a cost reduction in the middle of the housing program, because they get it about it that way. But they also need local municipalities support where to move forward. So, the developer is willing to do it. It's interesting as to whether or not the other housing authorities are willing to auto develop it further. So, we're looking at some other options, but I get what they're trying to do. But by applying that property exemption, the south state ends through the local jurisdiction, creates local challenges. So, we've got a lot of housing, we're going to run, and we have four projects. I don't know what we're talking about now. I can mention everything that they have in terms of housing. So, you know, we're at, I think Molly and I get the numbers, 500-ish, including Kristen, units in the next three, four years, 4500 units. And a big part is four cell, which is, you know, 195 four cell units. If all attainable loads, we've never seen that in the state. So, we kind of grant some housing there.
What is the name of those properties that's next to hospital?
So, right now, it's called, it was called Project Mustang. And that's because that was a code name across the world came in.
Okay.
We've now changed it to Housepad because we haven't been able to think of a good name. So, it's going to have a different name.
The question about Housepad is Longmont, it's such a good job, with only fields are 15. And that was a big partnership of a variety of incorporated, Angola, Chappaqua, all these are. Are are those companies still building now? Is that something that?
They're still there. And so, everything that we're building, so unlike other housing authorities, and frankly, you kind of know, the city of Longmont is absorbing a lot of housing authority. So, but we're still separate in structure, the council senate has housing authority. They still perform some construction. What happens when you self-perform is it actually reduces your capacity to have events in need. So, every project that I talk about is in partnership with the private developer, state agencies, our portable housing funds. And so, there are a lot of people out there seeking to do this. And it's interesting today, we have requests coming in on a regular basis now that we've seen what we've been able to do. I think the councils really also said to us, it's judicious to make sure you're getting the fees that were created under our housing health. So, it's really kind of gated from the process.
I guess part of my curiosity is because they were actually corporate partners. You know, you had, what's the parent company? Edna, Edna C V S, which I found fascinating to see. And I was wondering, those funds, if you're still, I don't know, corporate partners are willing to do that. Yeah, because we can certainly, as being state representatives, we can have an opiece to some companies saying, hey, we give this support, we go again after the deal. So, I just think that those kind of things are still happening.
There are some, but there are some examples of, I think, it depends on where their employees are located and and what they're trying to solve. So, you know, one of the interesting pieces that I came across last week is, and this is related to a project that's looking at. So, you can utilize revenue bonds and large T F Ps to build a facility. And you use the building itself or the housing as equity. The problem is you still have to have the 1.2 to 1.3 debt ratio, which for our perspective is a challenge. And we're trying to figure it out. What I ran across is you can go to these corporate partners and they actually secure their debt by giving you capacity to their, buttons of their houses, of that sort of equity position. So, we're trying to understand what that means, tax liability, attractive. And if your benefit falls into an enterprise zone or an opportunity zone, there may be more tax benefits. But it's a ways that allows the leverage to not necessarily have that on the books. So, we're trying to figure out.
But can I ask one more housing question? So, we did, we worry for the pass, House Bill 1175, that actually was one of those on our response. It was vetoed last year. They made some adjustments to it. Basically, what the bill does is it gives a right of first refusal to a local government. If there is a multi-unit building, if there are certain qualifications, that local government could actually be basically the first chance of purchasing it to convert it to affordable housing. This is going to be helpful. We were hoping this would be very helpful to you, what you work for in the projects. Have you talked about the policies, because there's something that you could look at with it? It just got its own, it was assigned very last moment, so.
I think it goes back to what I was talking about, this project, because you actually had the stuff, Jeff has the funds to be able to purchase it and be able to issue that and through that process. And so, I think at least from the long-term housing authority perspective and H C R housing community investment, being able to do that in terms of funding that house pretty difficult. And if, you know, if you're selling your issue debt, then you have to go to those. And so, really taking it out to me when it presents itself as functional, be a little bit more difficult. Part of why this other project that I talked about made sense, if you get the debt coverage worked out, is is that when you get about your seven and a half projects, and it starts spinning off fair amount of money, you're also looking at equity in that project, which then the equity can then come in and be the coverage for the debt that then over time would probably be that easier. But I think just having the financial capacity now is a little bit more difficult. But it's an option because in most cases, when we enter these biotech projects, you're having to negotiate the right of first refusal. And so, it makes negotiations a little bit more difficult. Well, if that's already required, then let us negotiate other clothes. We're going to be a little bit more firm on other.
Now, isn't there an issue around that I did in, you have some sort of tax benefit to folks that have their buildings, guys that they're vacant, they all social. So, if they're getting that larger benefit from something that they get, than it would be from selling it because now they can't get it leased, then they, you know, the logic of it is to sell it. So, if they're keeping out, like, you might have, you put it in something else, but the primary objective of those buildings that are sitting there vacant and and it's somehow in the private scheme of things, you know, financially speaking, is profitable to do that. So, now we have that that issue to tackle. I think that's going to be something that we'll look at, in my opinion.
That's, Sean, you're absolutely right. And it's, that's, that issue of buildings sitting there vacant and the holders realizing that they can sell it, what's what has been happening is venture capitalists in mind. And then they use, they take that loss and they use it to offset their other tax rates. But by doing 1175, that actually gives the original owners a chance to come to you first, come to Longmont first, before they go to the venture capitalists. They don't lose any money because they still have to pay, you, it's all the same to pay.
You pay market value.
You pay market value, exactly. But this is to redesign us to try to make that stop before the venture capitalists come in. And then that's still a problem, it's kind of the old kind of housing.
So, the value to this is looking coming to us. So, when we purchase a property for affordable housing and attainable housing, it allows you to actually negotiate with the owner. Because then you can talk to them about what their tax implications are going to be. And so, both of those projects, we actually negotiated a sub-market break for the land because the balance and that is a donation to the city. So, then it's telling them, manage your tax implications. And I think a lot of times, these factors, people don't think, come at us. But do you think it helps us to do a core brand proposition?
Yeah, because now they have, because of less of, at least with those problems, we need to have them first.
So, any question for, for the other 75? And it probably was working with tax credits because, of course, housing is going to be sold at market value, but that doesn't work for us. And if we can't afford to pay market value, then what's the point? But is there any kind of incentive to, if they go below a certain percentage of market value, then tax credits are offered to the owner?
I mean, that's exactly, that's exactly what Harold is saying. That this bill will now require for these buildings to call into this criteria, those are those have to let them first. And so, that's where they're going to have.
Those are the things.
Exactly.
So, then we could go out, put a pension for it. And so, we could put our G L, our own, and run, could allow us to go to the other part. And then we do the same arrangement that they, they're creating their action to facilitate the housing.
And it does not have to go through a long, a housing authority. It can just be the local government itself, nice, okay, great.
I want another question. I appreciate that you're looking to also develop and build housing to be purchased in those categories. And if those future homeowners, that is the way to get people to move forward. It's a, we're working with, envisioning and planning these, working with some of our local banks, that those folks can, that they'll already be getting kind of a relationship being built for referrals to banks that will understand this new homeownership of these folks.
We're working on that now. And so, we've had, so, hey, you're probably going to need about five days to be in in buying letting for that number of units. And so, typically, when you come into a person with a bank that has a construction loan for the developer, they always want to be part of that. We have one unsolicited book that is really intriguing to us in terms of negotiating down with these, we pay when you go to purchase the loan. They also have access to federal loan bank, which is a federal agency, but it's a, and they do down the equivalent assistance that can come in and assist in that endeavor. And so, we're starting that process now. Obviously, we're looking at this listed offer, probably looking at, I don't know, a few pretty specific regulators that we want people to participate in. And there's a few things at play to that. This this project is tough because even on the construction, on the construction, maybe you can go into this. You back up a little bit. So, the developer agreed to have a fixed amount of return in the project. We actually, in looking at the construction loan, we had to push that up a little bit because when you look at almost the third units being permanently affordable, there's an inherent risk on the construction loan side because of the challenges in keeping people qualified all the way through purchase. So, that's why we had to kind of step in and add additional funding to this. What's important is, once you get individuals interested in, is you have a symbiotic relationship with the builder and the people that are selling. What's important is, once you get individuals interested in, is you have a symbiotic relationship with the builder and the people that are selling it, the lenders that are in play, and the city supporting this, because you really have to stay very close to individuals as they're living through it, especially once they get qualified. We all know, you go buy a house, one of the first things they tell us is don't provide your car, don't make any big purchases. Once you're qualified, you're using the doughs. And then what we saw in other areas of the mission when we tried is, that was a significant headwind, because so many people were dropping out because they were doing that. And having a team that had been through the locker, getting with each other, and working with the individuals to ensure from the point of go into contract qualification, when you get to close it, they're ready to go. Because part of the performance to get it to work, you have to be, you have to really narrow the carrier costs on this project. And so, you know, we have a lot of things carrying cost, which help, so they have to be able to go. And so that's what we're working on.
So the other thing I heard in these grant discussions was transportation and economic development in the past year. But economic development, we think you've kind of come again, but Costco was our biggest economic development project. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, last year, you know, we had a pretty good run. One year, as you see by our larger, it's only had smaller, yeah, two smaller groups. But in terms of local revenue, Costco was significant in many ways, because we're now starting to see that spin. We do, it's going to occur, and so in terms of other groups are wanting to come in just because they located. Costco is one of probably, and companies retail, that can reapply trade area, and so we're definitely seeing that.
And with transportation, you're probably very aware of, that we asked you to work this out for, that we are hopefully working very hard at RTB. It's a, it's a challenge, for sure. Yes, for sure. But I think that with our density and with our, we're actually going to be working with the governor, but we don't still, getting it all together. So plans for next year, like with housing, transportation, and land use.
Mary, this is actually Gerald's question. And this is really for our legislators around, you know, we've obviously seen teens and adults in the last couple years, you know, our application, and we're pursuing more than that. Well, I know, we didn't, we weren't able to incorporate a grant program and initiatives, and basically giving incentives for AUs incorporated. Now, that doesn't affect your assessment, but there are incorporated areas right outside Longmont of folks that really want to improve, or have the ability to do AUs incorporated. The governor has indicated that he'd be willing to behind that. So it's supposed to be included in the 213, the controversial bill from the previous session, that bill would go through, a lot of negotiations, so it could be more APU. But this one, I know that will come up again. That's the only housing-related one that I know, other than just more working with municipalities for grants, both for ours. Certainly, the head, every head of public housing, Andrea Di Cantrera, is really making changes and really doing a lot there. So I think she's really wants, as a former city council person, she wants to work on it, be this policy. So I'm hopeful that she'll bring that whole on the table.
I'm curious about this 1.5 million greenway grant, so I'm just going to have, what is that, CDOC, same thing, really, all over.
It's a, it's a, it's a grant. And it's going to connect here, in the, the green?
No, it's going to connect out east here, up to Barbara Conne, so it's going to connect to that, I mean, that 1.5 million of, you know, a much larger apartment as a component of a grant. So we're working, apparently, the design is 100% completed, and we're just working to, we're working with the property on the last leg of that project.
This is that theater tour, you know, is it? Yes.
And this is what we have. We're having some negotiating issues.
A little bit nice connection again.
Okay.
Realistic connection.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the agenda, it's core asset allocation. They want to have a lot of the entire property, you know, so that's on the agenda. I think generally, if I could jump in on the transportation piece, so, you know, we, we look at, we've had a lot of conversations about people, and we're looking at housing, transportation. And generally, I just got the best of them, the job of that is our land use code. So a lot of things, people were fussing about, um, this legislation with land use code. You know, we're sitting back here, going, oh, man, it's our, and our code, we're tied, I mean, challenges are public. And, but all of that's in our land development code in terms of how we can move forward. I do appreciate the piece on the AU and HOAs, because we were definitely seeing, there are segments of our, of our community that was being impacted more than others, because they were the places that couldn't go in, because they didn't necessarily have that place. We'll see what happens over time, and it'll be good. But, so we're looking at it as a system. So when, when you think about the projects that I talked about, all of them are adjacent to the transportation system. Obviously, both of them are train.
I wasn't committed.
Right, so you wrote the train. And so when we look at the development, around, uh, first name, in terms of training, transit oriented development, you can't feel, I can't feel the ring maker, because he can bring grants in, and buy the bike crazy. But, you know, the work we're doing on the public product partnership of the transit station, that's moving, that's moving. So Johnny and her team have been acquiring land, moving forward, and really getting housing associated with the transit station. The other project I mentioned, we're doing around, is in the T R D area as well. But all the others are near transit route. And we also partner with DARTC, and their grant process for, my camera works, called this.
Partnership.
Partnership grant on creative ways to get first granted. And so Johnny and her team have also been involved in selecting a micro-traffic partner, Congresswoman Hughes, who gives a million dollars for that. I think they're nearing the end of that selection process.
We are, you can't speak about it then.
But I think, I think our hope is that September-ish.
Yeah, we're like optimistic about September and September.
So, so we'll have micro-traffic, so really now, I mean, I must say, this is a break, because it had a, sort of, everyone in the community, this is really that last mile, attached into it, getting folks across. And so all of that is built in in terms of how to look at housing and a broader community system. And the good thing is, is that they did intentionally bid the project, where other municipalities can piggyback on that bit that they choose to. So, fingers crossed, we're hoping that other municipalities that are adjacent to us start coming in and participating in that, because then it, that's all a broader transportation challenge. And when you think about it, Mayor and I have had a lot of conversations about part range traffic route. It really starts filling the void that exists, where there may not be a station on the ground end, but you can still get to a station without having to drive, work the parking lot. So hopefully, in a couple of months, you know, we'll be announcing that, but it won't happen.
Could I ask a question down there? What you got to the, areas about airport grants? I don't, this is not related to your grant, what's happening at the airport, but in the last two weeks, so one for me, just have usual for me to do this. But I've had two constituents in Longmont, shout about the touch and go, and I'm sure this is something that you're all hearing about. And I don't know whether or not we've had that decision. So what's, what, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I basically told the, it's not, it's not about the lead, or it is about the lead, but it's, basically, the touch and go, where they're training, and they're touching on, and they're taking off. That is a new allowance that the airport manager apparently has just started to do. At least that's what both the residents reach out.
That's, that's regular information.
Okay. We've always allowed touch and goes.
Okay.
And we have had training companies out there, training, teaching. Yeah, so FAA has created touch and goes for training, that's a longstanding practice. And I think probably what constituents in Longmont in particular are seeing is, you know, maybe a higher percentage of folks who are training on Rock Mountain are actually coming to Longmont. Same is true from, you know, people calling from, you know, birthed in, and moving before college. So, you know, you can't control where people are practicing and flying, but certainly, yes, we get our fair share of, to your own house, at the airport, the folks who are, you know, have some consternation about that, but we don't really have any abilities to manage them.
That the way it was presented to my office is, that this was a relatively new decision from the lot manager at Longmont. They didn't, something has changed apparently, in the eyes of these constituents, that touch and go has increased or something. Does this increase the volume, maybe that's?
Well, I think after the situation at Jeffco Airport, that improved, it was really from fiscal lobby, it's a barrier area that's really improved, that it's, you know, really came out strong about the lead fuels.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, it's kind of, we're finally getting residual, I think, effect of people that are, and I think we did have a problem for a while of people, a group that was really out there, you know, light stalking, the, the noise level, for a long time, it kind of fell off. And now we've got kind of a new group that's cognitive of it, maybe it's because of lead fuels as well, things like that. In my opinion, I think what, what we really been official out there, somehow we can attract some of these electric plane manufacturers uses as the, as their test site for having more of those, that's plenty for just, you know, personal use at that airport. And then you probably see the production because of the noise level from electric opposed to gas powered planes. So somehow we could, somehow figure out a way of attracting a business like that to here, that ended up making me interested. We're hearing a number of things against that holder, and having, kind of getting, people talking about getting rid of that airport.
Yeah.
So that, that might bring in more people to Longmont.
I feel that. So are you, along these lines, are you, is this becoming more and more that people are interested in, have you been involved more with either noise or lead or anything around airport?
Well, I think it is a misunderstanding on the public's part that we do not control the airport, because we own it.
Right.
They think that we have full jurisdiction over it. But once, we only have the news on, right? As soon as they're off, it's FAA. But to the point that Sean was making, we had a presentation from our managing airport manager, and he is looking at all the technology for the different fuels, but he didn't make an interesting point, which I was aware of that. Not every unleaded fuel will work with every plane, even if on their engines, and who's making it, and what the fuel, lead content is, or.
That's what that bill did pass, and yes, that worked in a way, and was running, was to be more of an incentive-based program for some of the funding for airports that was, start to encourage movement of those planes that can move toward on top of the fuel. So I'm not sure of the mechanics of how, once that bill is set up, but it truly is, is that open a door to incentivize the sort of being and pilots in their place to move that direction. So rather than, and I know he worked really hard on doing as far as could that bill, and that's why you're going to be speaking with that constituent later.
Well, one last thing, my understanding of the jump plane has like several different patterns that it has to go through. So it doesn't go in the same pattern even every, kind of takes off for jumping, so that it doesn't go over people, in my perspective.
We have suggested to take off landing planes, but they're suggested.
Yeah.
Depends on the weather.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're suggesting.
There's other pieces, I think to your question, have we been involved in it? Oh, yeah. We actually, I think, one of the, do we still have it on the website? All the videos with John?
Yes, on the airport.
So with noise complaints and other issues, it's probably seven, six years ago, I don't remember, but John thought about it. John was at CPSC, he was now CDOC, or who the governor had. He worked accounting for Rockwell, and so we hired him in our outside council for aviation, which we're still working with him. If you look at FAA grant insurance case, you'll see him, and AR, he came in to do a presentation for the community, video taken, so people can go and watch it, that answers all of these questions in terms of where we have control, we don't have control. Part of that, we actually did get into the part 16 case with the FAA regarding about I and land use. We actually won that case. But in, in all of it, here is simple plan, as the mayor said, once it's in the air, it's under the per view of the FAA, and he moves in, and if it's an aviation-related activity, you can't recover it even, it's on the ground. And in some ways, it's actually important to go through cities that own the airport, because they can counsel them to do so. They can put some folks into people who control land use decisions. Can't own the airport, they can't put into jurisdictions that have land use authority that don't own the airport. And that's where the fallback provisions from the FAA start coming in.
So my last direction, the resident on the airport does, she would let the city to replicate the airplane to replace their windows and doors.
I'm pretty happy with the noise. Oh, no, oh, so they do not understand, budgetary issues right now.
So it's, it's going to be an ongoing issue quite a lot. But thank you for talking to me.
Yes, of course.
Give me push bubble.
Oh, gosh. I will be sending them to the website, for sure.
Great. Are there any other questions about the, the grants and what they were for?
I appreciate the list.
Yes.
Thank you.
We appreciate the state.
Keep it coming.
So we are now, the agenda and the internships are staying very healthy for district students. And council is welcome for it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think I had a general agenda the night we did have the school board and council, something like this. And one of the issues that came up is the district does provide internships for students, but there seem to be some legislative restrictions that would, and then Sandy, can you help me, help me remember, what was the specific?
me, help me remember what were, what was the specific? It sounded like they were working with private industry in, it was a head agency to actually provide the internship.
Yes, I think it was cybersecurity was one of them. But go ahead, yeah, but, yeah, so my understanding that, you know, so this is part of the P Tech program, where the students are at the local dimension for all four years and then at the end, they have an internship. And, you know, there are a bunch of pieces to that. One was that several of the companies backed out of actually posting their internships at the end, and so the city stepped in actually, go all over here, and then they would take those internships from the P Tech program to help the city. But there were also some state legislative rules that said they're prohibitive, and having students be kind of on the floor or in factory and some of the areas, and so they found several businesses that were pulling out of the internship program at the last year. So part of the cybersecurity, I feel like.
It's a little bit of a, yes, and it's kind of prohibitive. That's, that's right. We're mainly broken about this.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, like, we lost a few months, and I was trying to connect it with, I have to go back a little bit, I didn't worry about this, and I, I was trying to connect to the I T. I'm, I'm sure what happened after I made that connection.
My, my, that would be a good follow-up.
That would be a good follow-up, because I think our meeting, well, our meeting was at the end of May.
Okay.
So, okay, so maybe, did you contact?
No, I had it before that.
Before that.
Yeah, so let me, we go back. I think we would just encourage you to continue that conversation.
Yes, yes.
I think was kind of what came out of it from our, was that we want to take these students, we're willing to do those internships, and for something that's a lot in the private sector.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, from the state level looking at batteries, and then from our end, it's really, I think, providing that training for businesses. I had a chance to talk to Scott Cook in the chamber, and that was something we were, we were kind of, we were looking at, is how can we, you know, just kind of overlay those spheres of businesses and really have them understand what the legislation is, as well as, you know, the fed up there, and help the state, it is, as well as other recover things as far as student engagement in their, in that facility, and how to be a, how to be a mentor to, to our business, what would that look? So I think there's several pieces, but one of the pieces that.
And that's true, because there, there could be almost a template for the business or the entity that's wanting to host inter.
Yes.
It's like a rubric to follow, or how do you follow up to make sure that that student is, is getting exposure, education, because many of them may never have.
That's right. So they're kind of creating like, creating the process, but if we have something that they go to, that's something that's concrete.
Yeah, something they can build from.
And that could be something that we handle through the chamber, or.
Yep.
That would be, but as far as issues around legislation, if there's something that's that wholly out bad, everything.
Yeah, so maybe it could be.
Yeah.
We, there's apprenticeship or internship that was around almost every year.
Okay. So on that same subject, excuse me, are there unions that have internships in?
S C A.
Yes.
S C A.
And you're, yeah. I always think we should, yeah, really lock into some of those as well.
Yes.
But that might be with F R C C.
Yes.
I think that's the area we totally forget now, so like, because we just talked about training for, for people who do not want to go to college.
And the school district, should we tie that in?
Well, State has, State has new, that's just educational standards here, career readiness and requirements of it, and that, so this is probably the time to add that aspect of, of, of education. It's part of the career technical center down here at C P C and, as well as preparation in college. But every high school has some, and the issue sort of, every high school has usually some sort of, like, I don't know, Longmont High has this high schools of business and it's a program, and I know that so does Southern Creek, and I think Iowa's pretty coming on with that too, and I know me, high school does as well, but they all have some sort of career technical student activities, whether it's, it's also some sort of training in career readiness, so that's, part of it's a standard that they all have to meet in the high school level. If we're talking also about, you know, some of the industrial stuff is usually at 16 years old and junior to even get into some of those programs, you can't, because of that idea of, you know, some of the requirements about safety and things like that.
So, exactly, with your change, the one thing I want to say that I'm really excited about is that we are having our first ever, on the Fourth of July event that the city is sponsoring, and our innovation center for kids in St. Grayan Valley School District, the innovation center, are going to put on a drill show.
That's a big drill show.
Three hundred.
Yeah. So. Some of the preliminary has been down on socials.
Good. Yeah.
Yes.
And it's like on viral, so everybody's pretty excited about it.
It looks, at least from the conference.
Yeah, and this is probably, in the, the Crowder School District, and then Longmont trying to have a different, introduce a different way, so, Fourth of July, so hopefully this more.
Here can I add one for fun, I know this one's, I didn't like to have, but.
Oh, you're.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to add that to the action yesterday, one of our engineers in Water Smart for our intervention, is that bill for 1344?
Well, is it Julie?
I'm not sure.
Who's, who wrote me? I was going to ask. Julie Gratt.
Oh, she's a great, she's a great for you to ask.
Well, we could, we could chat about, and I, I missed the deadline because I was on a lot, actually, a lot of trip, and I, I can't remember the number of bills. Is it day three infrastructure for waste water treatment?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, she wrote, I'm sorry to interrupt.
She's amazing.
You finish your thought.
I'll tell you mine. I also wrote you yesterday, and she said that 1344 has been put into, is, is an act now at this point, and it's regarding backfill testing, backfill.
Oh, I have seen lots of the, you know, that just today.
Okay, that sounds good. It sounds like the issue is that the bill requires a plumber license.
Plumber to use.
Or the person to be licensed, whereas before they were not. They had to be licensed before, then you didn't have to be licensed.
A plumber.
And so that's just becoming a problem.
That's the sunset plumbers bill. And you would think that all of those people, yes, I looked it up today because I was on, you know, and I thought, how in the world was that missed when this was the plumbers' sunset of their practice act? All the experts involved in bringing forth whatever was going to be a new sunset of bill, right, it's an actual bill, how, yeah, I have no idea.
I miss it, the bills back in, I'm chatting about, and we all kind of miss it that much.
It was all like, you know, one upset, well, it was, you know, backfill, backflow, preventer, I, yeah, anyway, I've got others from other jurisdictions, I think we get a lot from Longmont.
I can send a forward you out to this email that.
Yeah, now the issue is because the licensed plumber, plumber first required, this is why. All those people out, what's it been doing? Now they're not, they're not certified.
So what are the folks who do prepare, you know, C P H D nation have this certification?
Uh huh.
If they're all that knowledge.
I don't know.
I didn't start on that committee. And none of you saw this bill.
Still.
Yeah, I'm sure we go to.
These sunset bills are just, yeah, routine.
Yeah.
So like, how in the world, yes, please.
Out of letter.
Because I was hoping if the, these emails were being sent to, like, they were blast emails, and I'm thinking, well, that person is in, you know, Longmont, so hopefully that happens, so please send me.
And I'll send it to. And, and I'll, the basic resource, if you have questions, I'm happy to help explain the devices.
Okay, so I was thinking, want to ask about this Water Smart grant with the partners that Julie wrote me about, that they had a meeting today, 10 months, do you know anything about this? That, and I, I was so excited to hear that Longmont may be looking at doing this, that instead of using, you know, typical grade structure for waste water treatment, especially your temperature and water quality, to utilize wetlands, landscape, you know, it's going to be more efficient and less costly over time, and so there was a bill that we just passed that is having C S U and Mortensen Center actually study the feasibility of this across the state. And then I get this, this from Julie Gratt, and she had a, I guess, the, there's a, there's a grant about an interior for Water Smart, for the city of Longmont's waste water treatment grant.
Yeah, the great.
So I hope, I hope the city gets the grant, and does that mean there must be one in New Bay?
We're working on it.
Another negotiation. I'm like, this is so exciting, because I'm just learning about this, and the, I can't remember the guy, this scientist that was really promoting this, and he came, he gave us a presentation, and it's so exciting, so, okay, anyway, I'm wondering how they're doing this morning, but.
We hope for a grant for this.
Yes, yeah, I'm looking, thank you.
So that's our agenda, however, now that we have these representatives here, is there anyone else from staff that would like to stick it, or anyone?
I'd like to.
While we've got them cornered?
Yeah.
Or a suggestion for what you need.
It's a small town, you know where to find it.
Yeah. So, do you have any other questions for us?
I just want to thank, I want to thank all of you, but especially, thank Sandy, because I, I'm constantly writing to Sandy, and she answered me, unfortunately, even on some nights. So I'm just, thank you very much. Because you're being so responsive, I go, I didn't expect you to, you know, so I just want to put it out there, so that I probably, very helpful during the session, absolutely, keeping us on, you know, up to date with things that you've been talking about on Tuesday nights, and even, I'll ask her about certain bills if we haven't talked to her about, but she'll respond or let me know that, you know, okay, that, it's not a concern. So I was here to sort of really, important pieces for me.
I appreciate you asking.
And I would like to thank you at sort of public service, but also Longmont has mentioned, oh my gosh, dozens of times during all of our housing committee meetings, that we, Longmont is a champion for all the different types of partnerships in housing, your A U policy, the things that you're doing for whole of all housing, you, I can't even tell you number of times, the testimony that many of you made is so important to our community, so I just want to let you know that you're, you're leading the state when it comes to issues of now housing, work, and testimony that everybody deserves.
Thank you.
And the first fifteen time is coming. So thank you for this.
Yeah.
So.
There, I was sitting here with ass, and the caterers are here to pick up everything, so please have some dessert.